Hello, everybody. Good to see your faces. And we always enjoy, we always enjoy seeing many faces here. And we encourage you all to be involved in as many ways as you can with your busy schedules. But I want to, we're calling the meeting to order. But before I take a, before we move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to take a real quick point of personal privilege just to, many of you were not present at our last meeting. Some of you were. And some of you may have been watching on the live stream. And some of you are watching on live stream right now. But if you were not here and you are wondering what I'm talking about, during the meeting, I had a seizure. And I've had epilepsy since I was 15 years old. And I haven't told many people. It's one of those things where I choose to try to live a life that is, that is beyond that. It doesn't necessarily use that as a crutch or anything like that. But unfortunately, in a somewhat embarrassing situation for me, I had a seizure while I was leading this meeting. I, that's who I am. That's who God made me. And I try to use it for His glory. I want to thank those here who took care of me at that time. I felt very loved by my family, this family, and you. It was a painful, difficult situation for me, but you all made it easier. So, thank you for, that's love. That's taking care of one another in difficult times. So, I'm not going to go on because I could preach a sermon. But I just want to thank my family, my Tyrone family, for taking care of me during that time. So, we will now move into our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance. We'll stand for both. Father God, I thank you for my Tyrone family and for the blessing that they are in taking care of me and taking care of one another. And it's one of the things that makes this town great. And I just, I love all the things about it that we get to enjoy, the warmth, the small-town feel, the diversity, the things that we enjoy about this town that you blessed us with. Those are gifts from you. Tonight, in our meeting, we pray that we will all respect one another and understand one another's different viewpoints and give us all wisdom as we take up these issues that, whether they become difficult or not, give us wisdom to try to navigate through that. And thank you for the five of us in allowing us to be custodians of this town. And may we glorify you in doing so, in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first public comment period, I want to be clear about this because I think some of you might want to speak. And I want to make sure I tell you how this all works. You don't have an agenda. You can get one in the back on the table. Our first public comment period is for matters that do not appear on the agenda. So, if you have something that you came to talk about and you want to present it to us, you can either do it now, or later, or now and later. That's the way that will work. But if you read that agenda and you say, "Well, what I want to talk about is not on here." Well, you can do that now. You have three minutes to do so. If you will state your name and address and also submit a form, are those forms just in the front or are they also in the back?
On the podium and in the back.
All right. Both. And if you will give it to our wonderful clerk, we would appreciate that. So, if you have a matter that does not appear on the agenda and you wanted to speak about it tonight, we welcome you to come forward at this time. All right. All that talking, nobody wanted to say. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The consent agenda has passed. Our first matter under public hearings, we have two matters for public hearings. Public hearings involve a very similar process to what I just discussed. And you can come forward at a certain time. You can come forward to provide your opinion. You have three minutes, just the same. So, Philip, if you'll get us started on these two items.
Yes, sir. The first public hearing tonight is consideration of a rezoning from applicant John Barrow of a 15-acre tract with parcel number 0725038 from AR Agricultural Residential to C2 Highway Commercial. The applicant did approach staff before the meeting and notify me that they do wish to withdraw their application. I'll defer to counsel to approve or deny that withdrawal request. And a representative of the applicant is here tonight if you have questions.
Okay. We have a request to remove it or withdraw it. I will allow counsel to ask that representative a question if they desire or make a comment. Okay. Thank you. Your name, I'm sorry?
Jerry Powell.
All right. Mr. Powell. If anybody has a question, counsel. If anybody has a question for Mr. Powell, please do so.
If I may, at this point, you guys are withdrawing your, yes, please, excuse me. You're withdrawing your application to make that change in the zoning.
Yes. After consideration, we're going to be closing on the property next week. Trying to get ahead of the game as far as trying to navigate what we want to do. But it brought up some great points. So, we feel as far as in our best interest and also the town that we want to withdraw and take a moment to really sit down and figure out what we want to exactly do with the property and try to adhere to the concerns that were brought up. And we want to make sure that we do it with excellence, whatever we do with this particular property. But in next week, we will be finalizing and the property will be in better way than ministry.
Okay.
So, we'd just like to reserve to be able to come back at a later date to present something that everyone would fall in love with.
Very good.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Powell? Let's listen, I tell you what, let me, Philip, will you explain to the public? We can't take questions from the public right now. So, will you explain to the public exactly what we're talking about?
This property is, pull up the map for clarity. This property is the property directly in front of the Rivercrest subdivision at the northwestern corner of the Laurelmont Highway 74 intersection. This property right here, 15-acre tract, previously appeared before Planning Commission in a public hearing. Many of the residents were attendants in that meeting. That's this tract.
All righty. Thank you, Philip. Thank you, Mr. Powell, everybody. Okay. We will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of the application.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Because there is a withdrawal of this gentleman's request, that takes away the public hearing. However, at the end of the meeting, we will give an opportunity in our next public comment period for you to say whatever you want to say. So, you can, if you want to address this subject at the end of the meeting, you can do it at that time as opposed to, there is no public hearing now on this subject. So, you can't obviously give a comment if there's not a public hearing. But it will, you will have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. All right. Next item, Philip?
Yes, sir. The second item for your consideration is a variance application for Mr. Douglas Pollard. I believe you're familiar with the purpose of this variance application. This variance application was the result of a rezoning. And it was a condition of a rezoning that was placed on the property when it came before you last month for rezoning, I believe it was the last month. The applicant has requested a setback variance on his lot from 30 feet to 27.6 feet. The one comment that I will make is that if counsel does choose to approve this variance, that the setback along the rear property line be approved conditionally with the condition that the variance only be given along that portion of the property line where the buildings are in conflict with the setback. And I can go into that in a little bit more detail if you wish. But that is one condition.
I think we're fairly, at least aware of this issue somewhat. So, counsel, you might have some new questions after what we dealt with last time we dealt with this. But for counsel, are there any questions for Philip?
If I may, Philip, could you go into that just a little bit deeper with that setback along where these buildings are? You know, maybe showing us that red line in there and where you're intending to put that, the setbacks? Or what your thoughts are on the setbacks?
So, the, I've pulled up the proposed plat that the applicant ultimately wants to do with the property as presented in the rezoning, to rezone the property, then ultimately to split the property so that it creates a one-acre tract as kind of pictured here. The applicant's original request was to reduce the entire rear yard setback from 30 feet to two feet. If counsel chooses to go forward with this variance petition, approve it, I do recommend that if it's chosen to go in that direction, that we just go around the buildings as depicted here. So, the setback would remain 30 feet for that portion of the property line up until we get to those buildings. And then we essentially reduce it just enough to go around each building. And then it would come back to a 30-foot setback afterwards. This image just kind of depicts a little bit better what that would theoretically kind of look like.
Question that I have, and maybe counsel may be able to help us with this. If we were to approve this particular variance that the applicant is looking for, if the property is eventually sold and someone else comes along and they decide to remove those buildings, would it be possible that we could put a condition on that that then the setbacks would go back to its original 30 feet?
You wouldn't need to have that as a condition. That would operate under law. If you, if the buildings were removed, the need for the variance goes away.
Okay. So, then the setbacks would be back to their original, which would be the 30 feet?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, we'll start with a public hearing on this matter. And this is legally read. This is 28-foot setback variance from applicant Douglas Pollard of a 6.4-acre tract with parcel number 0738053 at property address 163 Palmetto Road to reduce the rear yard setback from 30 feet to two feet. As there, with the public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none. We move on to the opportunity to entertain a motion. Does anyone here would like to make a motion?
Can we interject one?
Yes, sure.
Yes. I do just want to make sure that I clarify that this is a proposed plat. This property line here shown does not exist. I used this because it was the best representation of a legal description of the property. But the property is not yet split. The property exists like this. Staff's conditional recommendation about the rear property line going around these buildings, it would continue as normal after this building along the other portions. I just want to make that clear, that that property line that's depicted there does not exist.
But as I read it for the record, that's still accurate?
Yes. I believe so.
All right. We had a motion, we did not get a motion, but there were no comments. Now, is there a motion?
Okay. I make a motion that we, that we give the variance with the conditions that the building line now goes around those buildings as described in the picture given by Mr. Trichette, showing the two feet from the buildings to the property line. But the balance of the property line will be at 30 feet. Am I saying that correct, Philip? Is that?
You're in the ballpark. That's good.
Thank you.
My second.
All right. We have a ballpark motion in a second. So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition? 4-0, Brandon? Our next item?
All right. Good evening. I have in front of you a proposal or an item to consideration to approve a new ordinance requiring the registration of foreclosed and vacant properties. Georgia House Bill 110, which provided local governments with guidelines on establishing vacant and foreclosed property registries, was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor in 2012. Staff and legal have determined to be prudent for the town to adopt an ordinance based on those guidelines and create a vacant and foreclosed property registry. You should have a copy of the proposed ordinance in your booklet. The draft ordinance included in your booklet was prepared by legal based on the guidelines in OCGA 44-14-14. If passed, staff will start working on an online registration process and working on enforcement. The registry will be helpful to staff when enforcement, safety, or other issues with the property come up and that we will have more up-to-date records on ownership and contact information.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Perkins or counsel?
I have a question. Who's going to take care of all this? It seems kind of like a lot of paperwork and...
As written, the ordinance falls back on me. So, I will create an online registration process. And then we will work with Catherine, our compliance specialist, to make sure that, going forward, that properties are registered. If, you know, we'll have, we'll make announcements where people can report, you know, if their house, if the house next to them is vacant, that kind of thing. We will try our best to, you know, put information on the, I mean, we'll put information on the website so that, you know, if banks are searching, if we have a registry, if they foreclose on a property, they'll, it'll guide them to where they need to go. It'll be, there'll be a learning curve for staff and we'll have to go through and, you know, do writeouts and just kind of find some of these properties. There's a few that we know about. But, so, yeah, ultimately, it falls back on me and we'll get it, we'll get it moving here in the next couple of weeks.
Can you tell me, like, what the reasoning, why this came about? Why?
So, part of it is, like I said, so, you know, you have a, we've actually had issues in the past where you have a foreclosed property or a vacant property. And there is a safety concern or a, you know, just keep maintaining the property, you know, grass and things like that. Sometimes Q public is not 100% up to date. And so, you go to look for the property owner, you know, you can't find the right information. So, the goal of this is to, you know, if I own a property in town and I vacate that property, you know, I'm supposed to register that property with the town. So, at least I know, you know, who that proper owner is. And if there's any issues, I can reach out and contact that owner. It keeps us from running into that problem where, you know, maybe the records aren't up to date or something has happened and records aren't up to date and we can't find the owner.
How does it benefit the town to do this, have this ordinance?
It just helps us to be able to find the owners of these properties in case they're, you know, like I said, property maintenance, we've had issues with, you know, squatters, things of that nature. And you got to get into contact with the owner of the property. And that's not always readily available. Because like I said, Q public, the tax records, all that, they're not always up to date.
On the violations section of this, it just says that it's punishable by a fine of up to, up to $1,000. Is that, you know, we're just putting that in the hands of the court and letting them completely decide? And there's no guidance? Or is there guidance in the law as opposed to this ordinance?
I don't remember if there was specific guidance in OCGA D.
$1,000 cap is typically your cap for any fine you have in ordinance that you put together. And that ceiling allows the judge an opportunity to apply discretion and charge up to $1,000, depending on the facts and circumstances.
So, they don't have any guidance other than up to $1,000?
That's correct.
And our judge does have a list of fines that she can set. That way, if an officer makes a charge and a bond is necessary, they have that list. We can actually, since she has up to $1,000 to work on, the judge could formulate that or come up with a fine amount for a first, second, and subsequent offenses to put into that bond list or that fine list. So...
What, does it affect the existing vacant and foreclosed properties now?
Yeah. We'll go through and we will compile a list of everything that's out there.
So, the person doing the, yes, it has the owner of the vacant or foreclosed property have to pay, has to pay $100 to the town of Tyrone?
Yeah.
If this is approved, how would we alert the residents of our town that this has actually been enacted? Is it possible that we put this through with their tax bills? Is that something that might be able to be done so that they are aware of this?
I don't know about the tax bill because that's put out by the county. But, you know, that's certainly something we could look at. But by all the other channels, you know, we'll do social media posts and email blast and all that. It'll be on our website. We'll do all we can to get it out there.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. So, a property owner dies. The house is vacant. Maybe even a sign up saying, you know, no trespassing and get in touch with the county for the property tax bill. How does that work if there's no heir?
That would be a question for Dennis.
There's an estate. The estate is a responsible entity. There typically is going to be someone identified under the statutes of dissent and distribution to identify a responsible party through the estate. It will take some working with the probate court and identify those issues. But somebody is going to wind up with that asset which has value. And the person that understands they're responsible for it, they would then register. It might take a little working with the estate to make that happen. But typically, you have a situation where somebody is just not taking care of the property and we're contacting them. We'll deal with those types of complex situations on a case-by-case basis. We'll find a responsible party.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I think it's a good idea. I just wonder if the deuce is worth the squeeze or whatever that saying is. Is there going to be a lot of trouble to keep up with?
I don't think it'll be that much trouble. It's probably going to be less trouble than actually trying to find, you know, an owner if we have a troubled property. Because we have run into that issue in the past where we've had, you know, we had two houses out on Spencer Lane several years ago. One burnt down, one was, you know, kids were hanging out in it and stuff like that. And, you know, we, I think we even did a lien on those houses. But, you know, there's just situations like that where, you know, I think it would be nice to have this type of registry where the information is readily available.
Would collect any revenue on that lien when the property was transferred over?
No, ma'am. It was, Dennis and I have spoken about that. It was not properly followed up on. That was years ago.
I remember.
Yep.
Wow.
All righty. We have proposed ordinance and a few questions. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the new ordinance requiring the registration of the foreclosed and vacant properties.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here he is. Next?
I've got, next item is for consideration approval of commemorative sign designs and placement. So, in your packet, you should have two examples of commemorative signs. I'm sorry, it's actually three. Sign one should read, "In memory of our fallen Lance Corporal James Thomas Williams. KIA May 14, 1967. Gone but never forgotten." Proposed placement will be northbound on Sonora Road in the area of Town Hall and Shamrock Park. Sign number two, "In memory of our fallen PFC Roger Darryl Thompson. KIA May 17, 1967. Gone but never forgotten." Proposed placement, southbound on Sonora Road in the area of the Mason Lodge in Tyrone Depot. And then sign number three, "Hall of NFL Home of Famer Calvin Johnson Jr. Proposed placement, north and south town limits on Highway 74."
Okay. I'm sorry. I haven't talked to you.
Oh, sorry. You should have, like I said, you should have mockups of those signs. They are DOT regulation. The Calvin Johnson Jr. sign has been sent off to GDOT for consideration. And as long as it's made based on the parameters here, 36 by 24 and four-inch letters, it is good to go. Once the sign is made and we have it in hand, GDOT will come out and place it for us.
And it will be on the north side and the south side, coming from both ends.
Right.
All righty. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
My motion, we approve the proposed language and placement of these commemorative signs.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, we are, the aforementioned, the aforementioned public comment period. This is for any matter that does or does not appear on the agenda. If you, if some of you arrived late, the public hearing rezoning request in front of Rivercrest, that was withdrawn. This public comment period would include, if you would like to speak about that, even though it was withdrawn, you have the right to do so. You have three minutes to state your comments. And please state your name and address and fill out a form and hand it to our clerk. But this public comment period is for matters that do or and/or do not appear on the agenda.
Thank you.
Great, great. I just want to just share a few things regarding the...
I'm sorry, sir. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes. My name is Alvin Todd. Stay in Rivercrest, 165 Park Haven Lane. I'm the HOA president there. Hello, everybody. How y'all doing? First of all, I wanted to just share, we had a HOA meet on a Zoom call. It was recorded. And Mr. Philip Troquet and Brendan Perkins was present. And they was, we was talking about the rezoning. And they shared with us that the purchase is going to be contingency based on whether it changed from agriculture to C2. You're here tonight. The application has been withdrawn and they are closing on next week. Now, I'm a citizen here in Tyrone. I believe it's important to have confidence in the leadership here. To me, if I'm not quite on the... understanding, I know what I heard, it's been recorded, and, um, all of a sudden now the purchases have been made, and it was shared for all the community here in, in our community that, in the purchase, the purchase was contingent on changing from agriculture to C2. That's one thing I, I have an issue with. Secondly, I did have a conversation with John Barrow, and I wish he was here tonight, but I see he have a, a representative, and you know, I know he's a, he's a minister, I'm a licensed and ordained minister myself, okay? I think that it could have been handled a little bit better, because the church is nothing but a community, you understand? And, and so if he came to the community, he wanted some of the people in the board to come to their service, take their services out. Well, I think it should have been, maybe he could have spoke to the community. Uh, you do unto others as you would have them to do unto you. Wanna do, treat people with respect, and that's not a knock on him, but I think it could have been done better. And I think moving forward with the city, if, if we can kinda get these things accurately, when they're planned, so we can have correct and clear communication, that would benefit us, because it's almost like there's something going on behind closed doors, and I'm just being a realist and honest. I'm a supporter. That's how I feel. That's that. So one thing is being communicated, then another thing is taking place. That's kinda confusion. That's where I am with that right there. I'm speaking on the half, I'm a homeowner. And it seem like we are not included in what's going on in, in the city of Tyrone. Off court, that's another thing I wanna talk about, the off pass rather. I understand that everything is going on down in Tyrone, but where, where do we connect in, in the plans? We are not connected, but we pay tax dollars, and I voted for mo- every council member on, on the council. So I know our vote, we want our vote heard, we want our voices heard, and we just want to star the town of Tyrone.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next? Yeah, could, uh-
I, I have it.
Don't forget, if you could, provide a, a form with, uh, we already have yours, but a form with your name and address on it, please.
About a hundred of them over there.
What's that?
No, I said you guys got about a hundred of these for me.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, members of the council. Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak. Um, to make a long story short, you know, every time I have come, or had to have come before the council, it's always been an issue against the homeowners along Highway 74. And, you know, I've been here for a minute or two, and it's not just me, it's, the new residents also feel the same, and we're represented again by pretty much every homeowner in the three subdivisions that occupy Highway 74, Rivercrest, River Oaks, and, uh, Southampton. If you remember a while ago, it seems like a while ago, about, almost fourteen years ago, fourteen years ago up until now, there's been about four major issues that has affected the homeowners along Highway 74, leading to this current one today. Uh, I wanna say the, the first issue was the, when Rivercrest, uh, wanted to gate the community. So, at the time, John Willen was the builder, we came before the council, we said that we wanted to put an aesthetic gate before the community, and I know you guys have this on record, so I wanna make sure that I'm not speaking, you know, out of turn, and for those council members who were not here at the time, you can go back to the record during that time. I wanna say it was oh seven, oh eight, when we wanted to gate Rivercrest. And to make a long story short, it was voted down by Councilwoman Gloria Fur and Linda Howard. The rest of the council members during that time are no longer present. But one of the reasons why it was voted down, and I quote, uh, Councilwoman Fur said, "I don't think the townspeople would take it being too kindly of being shut out of Rivercrest." So you fast forward again, another major issue that came along Highway 74 that involved the subdivisions along Highway 74, was when the town council during that timeframe voted in a gun range to go right next to Publix. All three subdivisions came in again and said, "Hey, wait a minute, this is not a good thing, this is not good for the town, let alone the residents along Highway 74." The same councilwomen took, took liberty with their vote, voted the, uh, gun range in, along with the rest of the council at the time, thus leading to the town of Tyrone being sued by the residents along Highway 74 because of the issues going with the gun range. Another major issue that affected the families again along Highway 74 is when the town council approved a storage plan to go right in front of the entrance to the River Oaks subdivision. We came, we pleaded, "Please do not allow for this to come, uh, to the residents in front of Highway 74." What did you guys do at the time? You voted it in. Again, the only coun- council members, council members that were still here right now are, is Linda Howard and Gloria Fur. So here I come again with an issue that affects all the residents along Highway 74. There was a gentleman that came to the planning commission, and he wants to build, correct me if I'm wrong, a- at a minimum, three to four thirty thousand square foot facilities. I know you wanna cut me off and I'll close by saying, if he wants to build those facilities, one of the major things he said during that planning commission was, he said, and I quote, "I know how you guys feel. I'm a homeowner too. I own a home in Sharpsburg." Well, my question to him is, he's not here tonight, but I wanted to ask Mr. Barrow, why won't he build his facility in Sharpsburg? I, I, I don't understand that. And again-
If I could, if you could, uh, sum it up, please?
I will sum up by saying this. Number one, once again, we are all gonna meet again. Why? Because the gentleman withdrew his request for the rezoning, but he still plans to build something right again that will affect, it looks like a small city, that will affect the majority of the homes along Highway 74. So I'm closed by saying this. I'm really hoping that as we move forward and the request comes in, that the council thinks about the families, the seven hundred plus families that live along Highway 74. One of my neighbors has already said it, "We're Tyroneans too, we pay taxes. Please do not let this happen." There's a hundred square foot, uh, there's a hundred, uh, acre tract of land, four miles down in Fairborough, that is in an industrial area where he can build his city. Thank you.
Before we, uh, we move on, w- we had two council members that were called out. I think they deserve a chance to respond if they'd like. Do you like to say anything?
Oh, yes. On the gun range, I did vote for it, and it was the biggest mistake of my life, and I have told several people out of South, Southampton, in fact, more than a few people, that it was the biggest mistake of my life. Uh, and it, I did not tell them this recently, it's been a few years back.
You have anything to say?
Um, the oh seven, oh eight, I wasn't on the council.
I didn't think you were. I thought you'd wanna address that. Okay, uh, next?
We'll ta- we'll have kind of a periods to sum up, or to answer some questions that, and Philip, I wanna ask you if you'll chat, uh, jot down some answers on, uh, okay, thank you. Uh, next? And if you could, please, please try to respect the three minutes. We're, we're trying to do that, uh, for everybody. Okay? Uh, okay?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian Gray. I reside at 110 Eaton Berry Drive in Tyrone, Crest subdivision. Um, my question to, um, Mr. Barrow and the council is, uh, we've not seen a rendering of what the proposed building is for the structures that Mr. Barrow wants to build. When will we see that? And what about the traffic impact to our subdivision? Has anyone taken that under consideration, and the impact of traffic on Highway 74?
And, and you said you did, or you will fill out?
I will fill out.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else? And, uh, uh, Mr. Powell, you, we'll also give you the opportunity to, to come back up and, if you desire, you don't have to. Anyone else?
Mayor and council. My name is Jessica Whalen. I live at 120 Valleywood Road. I'm just ca- I came tonight because I saw on the agenda the, the request for Mr. Barrow to change, um, agricultural property to commercial within our town. So that's why I'm here and hearing what I've heard. I'm glad he's withdrawn that, because I do not agree with him putting that type of facility in that area and impacting, um, my neighbors in that way. I don't, it can go up Fairborough. I just came back from the hospital. I avoided 74 because of all the commercial development and came in the other way.
All right.
Came down Palmada Road. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Isaiah Parnell, 345 Stonewood Drive. Is there any way that we can get a listing of, of the criteria that would be used to evaluate requests for zoning changes? How do we know, how do we know the criteria that the council will use once he makes the property?
Okay.
That's number one.
Meaning?
And, and secondly, is it, is it uncommon for people to make large investments without an assurance of a zoning change? I heard him say that although he's withdrawing it now, his intention is still to move forward with the purchase, which implies that they think that he's gonna be successful in getting a zoning, zoning change of variance. And I just wanna make sure that I understand that this is very much still an open question, and for him to make that kind of investment before knowing whether or not a variance is gonna be granted, unless he knows something that we don't know, it's problematic for me as a resident.
I certainly won't speak to his investment. I'll, I'll let Mr. Powell answer that question. All right, next?
Just a, a quick question for councilwoman that said you made the worst voting for the gun range. I wanted to know more about that. Why do you say that? In order to prevent further, in the future, other board members making that mistake, reference to our community? I don't know if you can answer that now, but I just wondered when you said that, why?
If it's permissible, I'd be glad to. First of all, after the whole thing was over with and done with, I realized that I really didn't know too much about what a gun range was. I was listening to everyone around me, and I thought it was just a simple, simple building that you went in to shoot guns, and I thought it was safe. I'm still not sure that it's not safe or it is safe. But then I got to thinking, I went home and I couldn't sleep. I got to thinking, what if I lived over there? Would I want that, would I want that in my backyard, front yard, side yard? And no, I would not. And I've hated it ever since I did that.
I really appreciate your honesty.
That's the truth.
And I hope when you discuss what's happening in front of Rivercrest, that what you're saying, you can relate. I would really appreciate that. And then another thing, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, I had trouble with your rezoning sign itself. It didn't specify exactly what parcel that, um, was trying to be rezoned. It was some confusion. The way the sign was placed, parallel to the road, people would not have seen that coming in, um, to Rivercrest subdivision. And it specifies exactly what's going on.
Uh, I'd like to say yes, Philip. We've had several of those signs placed facing the street rather than where you can read it coming from both sides. It makes it very difficult. You either have to pull in a driveway, pull over on the side of the road to read it, and I have gotten complaints about that.
Okay? Forms, are we getting forms?
Yeah.
Um, my name is Mavyon Fleming. I'm at, uh, 170 in Rivercrest Park Haven Lane. And so I just wanted to go on record that, two things. Number one, as, uh, my neighbor indicated, I'd love to see the renderings of what they plan to do with that space. And then number two, I'd just like to say that I'm totally opposed to, and I wanna go on record, that I'm totally opposed to any plan to use that space for commercial. So I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I make one comment while you're thinking about what you're gonna say? Uh, Mr. Powell, uh, I've been informed, I, I can't allow you to speak again about the, the issue, because that would give you an unfair advantage for the future. So, my fault.
Good evening. My name is Raffi Abol. I live at 275 Park Haven Lane. I'm in Rivercrest subdivision. First, I wanna say thank you to those who did respond to my email that I sent. Um, I just sent an email to you all, just so you know how important it is that we don't allow commercial buildings directly in front of our neighborhood. This, um, you mentioned, you know, thinking about yourself, and would you wanna live by that? I have two small kids, and most of my neighbors have small kids that are planning the community. That's one of the reasons why we moved here. So I want you all to, whether it's today, whether it's next week, whenever they come back, whoever comes, take into consideration your neighbors. We are your neighbors. We are community residents just like everyone else in Tyrone. We've grown to love the city. Uh, we, my family's been here for five years, and I wanna make sure that it's somewhere that we can stay for a long time to come, and not somewhere where we feel like we're outsiders to the neighborhood. So whatever comes next, whether it's Mr. Barrow or whoever, consider all the extra property that people can build things on that don't have to be right in front of someone's house. Please. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next? Okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah, one more, sir?
Good evening.
I am Dr. Melanie Coleman Bowers, and I am also a resident of Rivercrest. I live at 165 Delmar Place.
Hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
You get extra time.
Um, I am also a resident of Rivercrest. I live at 165 Delmar Place, and, um, I spoke last week, or week before last, with the planning commission, but also wanted to address you all, just to share, uh, some thoughts for you all's hearing. I've been in Rivercrest for about seven years, and moved there for a lot of the same reasons that my neighbors did. My husband and I have two kids. Uh, they're now fourteen and sixteen, and, um, it, it's been a fantastic place. They've got friends, we've got, you know, neighbors who've become friends. Um, there's something special about Rivercrest that we wanna maintain and that we wanna protect. There are some challenges with being in Rivercrest, some of which we knew when we built. You know, we knew there's a rock quarry, and we are reminded, if we ever forget, every Wednesday afternoon. Uh, so some of those things we knew. Some things have changed since we moved into the neighborhood. And so you talked about, you know, the importance of, you know, kinda thinking about what would I want if I lived in that neighborhood. One of the things I would encourage you all to do and ask you to do, drive through Rivercrest in the mornings around the time that, you know, the school buses are coming through. Drive through Rivercrest again, you know, kind of at the end of the, of the day, when folks are getting off work. And I was gonna say, turn right. You can only turn right to get onto the Highway 74. There's no traffic light to get us out of the neighborhood. The other three streets have a light. They assume we do. We don't. The noise that comes from the rock quarry, I can hear, 'cause I live right, you know, kind of on that side of, of the neighborhood. I know that there's a buffer there. I can still hear the noise. I can still hear the beep, beep, beep of the heavy equipment as it's backing up. When I wake up in the morning, it's there. And so my point is, please think about the cumulative effect of these changes over time to the quality of life for the residents in Rivercrest. Help us to protect it. Help make this a place where we wanna stay. Help make this a place where other people wanna come, um, and, and live and move and grow and contribute and maybe build homes here. I wanna make sure that we're sending a message to potentially new home builders, that, you know, if you come into Tyrone, it's not gonna suddenly be a completely different place five or seven or ten years down the road. I'm just asking for you all's help and consideration in protecting what we came to Rivercrest.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Marcelino LaCanti. Got to say last meeting. Ten miles across its. All are human and we're all flawed. Best, you know.
You can bring it across. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for bringing your comments. We will, what we'll do now is I'm going to give Philip a chance to kind of touch on some things that were asked or said or needed clarification. We do really need to make sure that we don't get into a back and forth and just try to keep some semblance of order. If you have something that you want to say after the meeting, I personally will volunteer to sit here with you until at least you're ready to go. But I think others might do that, too. But we just need to make sure we don't get in back and forth. So Philip, I've stalled long enough. If you have something written down there of things you want to say to address their questions.
So I was trying to write down a couple. I apologize if I missed any. We're also having some live stream issues. But I know Mr. Todd asked about the sale being contingent upon the rezoning. That was something that maybe was talked about in the HOA meeting. That's the private property owner's sole and exclusive right to purchase the property contingent upon the rezoning or not contingent upon the rezoning. It sounds like he may move forward with the purchase regardless of the rezoning. I don't know the purposes for his reasoning and those are his own. So that's all that we really have to say about that, just because it's a private property owner right to purchase the property. Normally, somebody would make a rezoning contingent upon a sale, but sometimes that's not necessary for the sale. It's just a component of it. So that's what may be going on here.
Philip, if you would, or if you'll give me, let me butt in here. One example, one of the gentlemen asked, you know, is it normal for, you know, there to be a, you know, somebody to come forward after having bought property and then, you know, the council voted down or whatever. It is normal for someone to buy a piece of property before coming before for a rezoning. It happens. I wouldn't say majority of the time, but it happens a good bit. And just a couple of weeks ago, council denied a rezoning on the south end of town on a piece of property that someone had already bought. And they actually started working on it prior to getting their zoning. But they were ultimately denied. So that is, it is normal or it does happen. And so not everybody, and I believe one of my exact wording during the Zoom meeting, I was under the impression that this was contingent upon sale. And I believe what I said in the meeting was, it sounds like this buyer is trying to do it the right way by trying to get his zoning prior to the sale. I didn't know that he was going to go forward with the sale. But ultimately, he has made that decision. So I just wanted to add that in there.
As staff, we go off the information we have at a time. So we just give that information as freely as we can. Yes. So kind of moving on, and if council remembered a particular question that you want me to address, please let me know. In regards to, there was a question about traffic impact analysis and architectural renderings. When does that happen? Does that happen? It does happen for multiple different stages in a development process. Sometimes it's required for a rezoning. Not all the time is it required for a rezoning. In fact, it's most commonly required before construction. So during a site plan procedure for a property, when buildings are being actually planned to go on the property, architectural renderings will have to go before planning commission to be approved. Traffic studies will have to be performed by professional traffic engineers to calculate the impact of that development. They'll also take a look at traffic circulation and what is the best means of accommodating traffic. If traffic circulation and traffic requirements or architectural requirements are not met, they do not get building permits, they do not get land disturbance permits, they are all contingent upon those items being met. Traffic conditions, architectural conditions being, environmental conditions being met before a building permit or a land disturbance permit is issued. So that's the answer to that question. Sometimes architectural renderings and light traffic studies are performed for the purpose of rezonings, typically for very large rezonings. If, remember the Sandy Creek Corners rezoning for the mixed use development, that was a very large development proposal. And so they did have to submit, in fact, not only just a traffic report and architectural rendering, but they actually had to submit an application to the state. And so it does depend on the scale, size, and intensity of a development as to whether those things are required at the time of rezoning or at the time of site plan and construction approval. So that's that question. We had a duplicate question about proceeding forward on rezoning contingent. I will just say one more thing. The town of Tyrone cannot force a property owner to have their sale contingent upon any factors. We just don't have that power in local government. I'm trying to see if there were any other questions. Some of them were repeats. Some of them kind of get a little bit into our land use and future land use map, which I don't want to delve into too heavily unless council wishes me to do so, as to like why commercial here and different things like that. I can briefly state that why commercial on the corridor typically associated with a combination of factors, some market kind of driven factors associated there, but also the town's future development map and the character area that it lays within is appropriate for certain zoning classifications. So that's what kind of drives where commercial goes, where residential goes, different components of that. And then in regards to the intersection, I know there was a question about the intersection. GDOT owns 100% Highway 74. We do try and have as much input and influence over intersection improvements as we can. GDOT allows us to comment, but their will is the law for Highway 74. And so how they design their intersections and where and how they choose to do certain treatments is, it's entirely within their hands on making those improvements. So yes, I don't know if there were any other questions that council had or remembered that you'd like me to address.
Philip, I have a quick question. If they go ahead and close on the property next week as residential, they can still put a church in there, correct?
Yeah. The religious land use law from the federal government does not allow us to prohibit the erection of a church or any other type of religious institution. We are permitted to have conditions for those types of structures. They will be, it will be a conditional use. Back to the traffic and rendering portion of it, when it gets in front of us as a site plan, if it gets to that point, they will have to do a traffic impact analysis. They will have to submit architectural renderings. Planning commission will have to approve that. Staff will have to approve that. Our town engineer, the water system, environmental health, planning and zoning, the fire marshal, police chief, it goes through just about everybody for approval and they do not get a permit until all of those items have been met and held to the town standard, which is along the corridor pretty high as it stands.
Thank you.
Did Philip miss anything that someone was specifically looking for? Okay. Thank you, Philip. That was, as always, a very good job. Philip has a tough job, if you all don't know, dealing with these kinds of issues. And he always comes off smelling like a rose, at least in our eyes. Was there something that you had asked, sir?
Just a follow. I'm Carl Jackson from Riverhoops.
Yeah.
I can look in our ordinance for the definition section, but a church is usually, it's actually not church. It's usually religious institution is what it's more broadly defined as. So it's not necessarily a church. It could be any type of religious institution, typically for assembly purposes. There are some limitations. A church does have to, again, have assembly purposes. There's certain types of ancillary uses associated with religious institutions. So the scope is fairly narrow, but it's pretty intuitive in terms of what most people would ascribe to a religious institution or church. I can pull that definition and give it to you after the meeting if you prefer. Yeah.
If I can, I think in some ways that it's important that we identify that these properties, that unoccupied pop properties are already zoned, correct?
Some of them are. Yes, all of them have some type of zoning.
Right. So I mean, based on that, that if somebody was to purchase that, then whatever rights come along with that property that's already zoned, those people have that right to do that, whoever might be the, am I correct in saying that?
They have the right to pursue it as far as the conditions in our ordinance allow.
Correct. I'm told our sound is not right on live stream.
I've been trying to monitor the live stream situation. I'm also recording it locally. So after the meeting, it'll get uploaded at full resolution. Apologize for that.
Good IT guy.
I've been trying to field some of those questions as well.
I'm turning the volume up. So maybe that'll help. I don't know what's going on with that.
I'm not sure what's going on there.
Philip, could you, to elaborate on Mr. Campbell's point, could, you know, there are two O and I properties in front of that neighborhood and there's the AR. Could you just off the top of your head, give a couple of examples of conditional uses as those properties sit, that if someone were to buy that property today, they would not have to come before council or planning commission? And they have, you know, what could they do?
So two of the properties, one of the properties is AR, this one in question. Two of the properties are zoned office institutional. There are two different types of uses in our ordinance, permitted and conditional. Permitted uses are allowed by right. They're usually not described any extra conditions other than the basic minimum development requirements that are part of that zoning district, like setbacks and the like. Conditional uses are uses that have to comply with extra conditions. These are usually in the form of added buffers, soundproofing, different things like that. But some permitted uses would be, two of those properties are office institutional, so offices and institutional type uses. So medical offices, you know, architectural offices, different things like that, that you would typically ascribe to office uses. Some of the conditional uses do kind of seep into a little bit of, a little bit of the higher commerce type uses. Some of those may even include, one of them is, one of the highest intensity, one is an outdoor amphitheater, although they would be a conditional use with very heavy buffers and different things like that ascribed to them. But there are, there are a variety of uses that can be already, you know, by right pursued on some of those properties. I'm trying to remember some more. I can't off the top.
Philip, were those zoned like that before Rivercrest came in or was it all done at the same time?
So Rivercrest, to my knowledge, started very similarly to Southampton. It was all one tract that was purchased by John Wieland and most likely another commercial developer. It was subdivided. Some of it was rezoned duplex. The AR property was the original zoning of that property. Some, that property did not get zoned. Two of the properties got zoned office institutional with the thought that it would be, you know, pursued as a planned development all at one time, commercial in the front with residential in the rear. So it was zoned at the same time as Rivercrest, most likely, those office properties.
Thank you.
So there could be duplexes built in that neighborhood?
So the Rivercrest subdivision is unique, and I can get into that a little bit more. But it zoned duplex residential with conditions on the zoning for it to be single family. A lot of that had to do with the fact that the subdivision had access to sewer capacity. And it's a conservation style subdivision with a lot of preservation in the rear around floodplains and the like. So, and to accommodate several hundred foot buffers for around the quarry side of the property. So it is duplex residential, but that's mostly for the provision of half acre lots under a single, single family home provision.
Okay. And thank you, Philip. I appreciate that. Are there any staff comments?
I have a couple, sir. First off, I would, I want to recognize, and I apologize, I called it late today, but today is Cindy Farrell's 25th year with the town. So I wanted to mention that publicly and I want to reach out to her tomorrow. I didn't get a chance this afternoon, but she's with our library, for those who aren't familiar with Ms. Farrell. But yeah, 25 years today with the town. So that's awesome. We, Mr. Campbell and I were talking about that earlier today. We have several tenured employees. We're very proud of the fact that we have some long tenured folks and she's, she's one of them. So I think it's her and then Major Brock is probably, you know, he's the longest tenured, of course. He's closing on 40 years. And then Ms. Farrell with 25. I'm 23, I believe, going on. So there's that. I do want to let you all know also that we finally have enough applicants to move forward with staffing or DDA. So I will present you all with the names and qualifications of those applicants here, probably in the next, if not tomorrow, Monday. And then we will come up with a process for vetting and figure out a game plan for going forward. So I'm very happy with that. Something we, you know, Philip and I have been working on for all year and we're glad to see, we're glad to see some movement on that. And the last thing, sir, we know that your birthday is coming up. So staff got together this week and just got a card for you, sir.
So what is it, 40th?
Yeah.
Come on now.
Happy birthday. That's for all of staff. And that's all I have.
All right. Well, that was very kind of you, staff. Thank you for doing that. Staff comments, anybody else?
Can I use the microphone?
Please.
During the retreat and the budget meetings, it was discussed about meeting management, agenda, meeting management systems. And Philip and Sierra and I have been with Munich Code, working with Munich Code. And tonight's agenda is a product of that. And I got some compliments on that. And I believe that Philip designed that format. So we will be live soon and then you guys will be trained and staff will be trained as well. So it'll make everything move nicer and quicker and we'll get more stuff online for the public as well.
Yeah. I will note that for the public in particular, this new meeting management software allows you to subscribe through a plugin on our website to receive agendas as soon as they're published. So if you email subscribe to getting agendas and getting, and getting packets, they will come straight into your inbox. The city of Fayetteville does it and I live there and it's actually very convenient. So that'll be a good feature for the citizens.
And since we have so many people here, will you, you tell people how to sign up for the newsletter?
Sure. On our website, if you go to tyrone.org, go to contact, there will be a dropdown. And I forget how it's worded. I believe it's mailing list or, I'm sorry, I can't remember how it's worded. But there is a dropdown. Click that and just enter your name and your email. You'll be on our email list. I try not to send too many out to, you know, I know people get their inboxes full all the time, but. the time, but once a week, once every other week or so, we send out emails. There's about 1,000 subscribers now, so that's pretty good. And, you know, if you stay on the website long enough, a pop-up box will come up. That's actually how we get most of our signups, so those little annoying pop-ups. But that's just two ways you can sign up.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Staff comments, anyone else? Okay. Do you want to recognize any new?
I can do that. Devon Bouillon is here tonight. She is our new environmental specialist. Come on up. Yeah, we have several new employees.
Not shy, I like it.
Devon is, I like it, yes, she's not. You don't have to come up, but if you want to, you may. Okay, introduce yourself away.
Oh, okay. All right, well.
You can turn around to them if you feel more comfortable. Sure you can.
Because I know there's a microphone, but it's nice to meet you all, and it's also great to meet you. Quite frankly, I've worked in local government before. I'm Harrison with local.
Thank you. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That it? We're good? All right. Okay, council comments?
Well, as you know, we just finished up our 46th Founder's Day last weekend, and I think it was a great evening, especially, especially the fireworks were absolutely spectacular. But I do want to do a shout-out to all those that were part of it, all our volunteers, all our staff members that took the time to be out there. And Linda and Rebecca from our recreation department did a phenomenal job. And all those that were there, I heard a lot of positive comments, and everybody just did a great job, and I thank you all for that.
Well, and we invite everyone here to, anytime you see any kind of an event that we're having in anywhere but Shamrock Park, please, please come and introduce yourselves to us or let us introduce yourselves to you. I think tonight is a good example of how those events can be beneficial. So any other council comments? Okay, I have one. There is a, there is an issue that has arisen on Crab Apple, is it Lane or Crab Apple Lane? Crab Apple Lane, if you know where Far Road is, Far Road crosses over Dogwood Road. And Crab Apple goes into Peachtree City with a well nicely gravelled road. This is not, it's not some, you'll hear some that from elsewhere that will refer to it as a dirt road. It's a nicely gravelled road. That road goes into Peachtree City. Goes into Kedron Hills subdivision. And there are not many golf carts that go in from Tyrone into Peachtree City. I'm going to be real careful with my language here. I don't want to, I don't want to get off the beaten path and offend, but a nerve has been, is it struck or stricken? So they, the Kedron Hills has decided that they want to request from Peachtree City to block Tyrone residents from getting into Peachtree City. Yeah, now you know why a nerve was stricken. Both for automobile traffic and golf cart traffic. And it's my understanding that they're more concerned about golf cart traffic than they are automobile traffic. Well, there are some, there are some underlying things there that we all know reside, but Peachtree City, of course, said, sure, we'd be happy to do that for you. If that's what you want, we'd be happy to do that for you. Stop me if I say too much, that's, there, the reason I, the reason I say this is because some, there are, there are some legalities that I don't want to make assumptions on. Peachtree City has made it evident in public meetings that that's their plan, is to sell a portion of the road to that HOA to allow it to be closed off to Tyrone citizens. They, they charge our citizens $165 to register their golf, your golf carts to get into Peachtree City. I think we charged 30, right? We charged them 30. What's the history of the mutual agreement?
I don't know the numbers, but for several years, we had a reciprocal agreement with Peachtree City that they would honor our stickers, golf cart stickers, and we would honor theirs. We continue to honor theirs. They no longer honor ours. So now Tyrone residents have to pay that $135 or whatever the charge is, 165, to get a Peachtree City sticker, to have dual registrations on your golf carts if you want to go into Peachtree City to Proger or wherever, visit friends.
Take your child to school?
Yeah, so any of that.
Okay. So, point being, we welcome them to come into Tyrone, whether they want to go eat or they want to visit neighbors, friends, or anything they want to do. They'll be closing off that opportunity, as I understand it. I just want to tell you, this council is on top of it, to the extent that we can be. That is a county road, because one side of it is county, one side of it is town. Because that is the makeup, it's officially a county road. So, and then, of course, it becomes Peachtree City Road. I've had some conversations with people on the phone, and I was, I was called some very unfortunate names. But it really strikes a nerve with me, I'm going to tell you. It's not so much that we'll no longer be able to get through, it's the, it's just the fact of what they're doing and the message that it sends. And I'm not afraid to come in a public meeting and say that. I've said it to them privately, and I will say it publicly. It's flat wrong. So I don't know what else I need to say about that. I've probably already said too much. Sure.
Can't hear her back there. The online audience can only hear you if you're up against a mic.
And right now, they can't even hear that, can they?
Hope so.
I was just wondering if you can say more about any rationale they've shared with you about making this change?
You're trying to reel me in.
I have no context.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. The reason was given to me that they're responsible for the safety of their citizens. And, no, 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 wait, wait. Golf cart, and there's a, there's a pool, like a neighborhood pool right there. I don't want to make any accusations. There's a neighborhood pool very close in the golf cart. They also are really big on their golf cart path maintenance costs. They do have, what, over 100 miles of golf cart paths? And they do spend a lot of money on their maintenance. And they're trying to figure out any way they can to pay for maintenance. And so they're also looking for ways to minimize impact on those paths. That's another, I'm not, I didn't mean to imply anything with the safety comment. That was the literal comment, that's why I said it. So I think those are the only reasons I've been given.
Can I ask something?
No.
I can't.
Yes.
I was just, isn't it true that they let the south side of Fayette County in on their paths?
That's because they wanted to get their kids to school on the cart path. So they wanted that path. Is that right? Would you say that's right, Dennis?
That's probably close enough.
He's in the neighborhood?
In the neighborhood.
In the ballpark.
Since when did our county, or town attorney become in the ballpark?
Talking about Mothercliff, Fayette County.
All right. I'm happy to talk about that. I have good relationships, we have good relationships with them, but this is kind of an issue that we just can't seem to, we can't seem to fix. So I don't, I hate it. And I think that's it. Are there any council comments? Did y'all think of something while I was speaking? Okay. I believe we have a need for executive session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, one item for real estate.
All right, and we will be back as soon as we can. If anybody wants to talk to us afterward, you can hang around just a little bit.
Motion.
Hello? I'm sorry, is there a motion to move executive session?
I make a motion that we remove for executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.